designate it as a CPC annually and the year is ending. So it was appropriate that President Trump do that again. It's going to help alleviate just unfathomable human suffering, as we've seen in that mother's eyes today, to halt Nigeria's descent into failed state status or an invert possible civil war.
Yeah.
And not to deepen the spread of terror across Western Africa. It's absolutely essential that Nigeria's government start engaging in the security of its own people. And again, there has been some willingness, political will, to fight the terror groups in the north. But there hasn't been any prosecution, so far successful prosecution, of any one from the Falani militias at all. So I think that that's...
Just to say that again for emphasis, there has not been with Falani militias.
Yeah.
Efforts to.
So there hasn't been... And then that is, I think, more of a police work. And, you know, warfare is very different now. There's... Human intelligence is getting rare and rare. There's, you know, drone intelligence and other forms of technological methods. But I think that it's actually a relatively easy problem to solve relatively. And it should start with that and simultaneously actually work on the... And help, you know, locate Leah Sharibo, you mentioned, and the Chibok schoolgirls that are still enslaved. You mentioned, Mr. Chairman, that there was intelligence sharing. Including in the north, there should be cooperation and work on the terror groups and sealing the border and sharing our experience with that. President Trump's been very good with that. And we have a lot to impart. And if the government of Nigeria is willing, I think it would benefit all of us in the region.
Thank you very much. I think, you know, consecutive U.S. administrations have defined or described the relationship with Nigeria as one of its most important on the continent. And even though that relationship has been complicated with, you know, periods of friction, I think this moment that we find ourselves in seems as if all things have aligned. And there is an opportunity now for both the U.S. and Nigeria to come to the table to reset that relationship, especially given the fact that citizens across the board in Nigeria, every data point you look at, there's overwhelming acknowledgement that the levels of insecurity in the country are unacceptable. I think the fact that we have this coming from Nigerian citizens provides the opportunity to have real, serious conversation based on concrete benchmarks for progress. The mistake that would be made is if it is seen as being a selective intervention favoring one group over the other. So there is an opportunity for Nigeria and the U.S. to reset its relationship, one that would really be based on listening to the Nigerian people. And Nigerians are saying levels of insecurity are very high. How do we address it? So this opportunity now provides leverage to the U.S., working with the Nigerian government, to actually show some very clear progress.
Okay. Thank you very much. I would point out, and this is worth noting, because I was always perplexed with Secretary Blinken, and I asked him at hearings just like this, why he withdrew CPC, and I never got a good answer. But when we were doing the International Religious Freedom Act of 1998, I held all the hearings, most of them in this room. And John Shattuck, who was the Assistant Secretary for Democracy, Human Rights, and Labor, testified against it for the Clinton administration on the record. I have all the records. You could go look at it. He said it would create a hierarchy of human rights, which is nonsense. And I even, in my response to him at one of the hearings, was to say, okay, I was all for combating apartheid, which was not a very popular thing within my party in the very beginning of the Reagan administration, and I was all for it. Did that take away any other human rights work we were doing? It was not in lieu of, it was in addition to what we were doing in any other area of human rights work. And I said the same thing about religious freedom. It is a pillar of our constitution. It's a pillar of our... It's really a universally recognized human right. And they said it would... One year later, I had a hearing on, did it do that? And I had the CPA, the Ambassador-at-Large for Religious Freedom testify, because they were all saying, Shattuck especially, it would make everything worse on religious freedom. And the word back was, even after one year, it was seriously advancing religious freedom. Ditto on trafficking. I was told by Harold Ko, the Assistant Secretary for Democracy, Human Rights, and Labor, right from where we're sitting right now, that most of what was in my Trafficking Victims Protection Act of 2000 would be counterproductive. We don't need a tip office. We don't need... We don't need all of the dozens of new programs that were unleashed by that law. And there was a bipartisan law, Sam Gajson, who sat right here with me. It was my bill, but he was our principal co-sponsor, and we really worked together to get it passed. And he was from Connecticut. And again, as we went over year and year after that, it was like, yeah, it really did help. But it was stopped in its tracks had we listened to that argument. Blinken was a part of that on the religious freedom back then. And I always felt, I could be wrong, that there was a sense that the Religious Freedom Act was not something he was terribly enamored of. So it was very easy to get rid of the CPC status for him, because he did not give a good answer when asked directly by me, and I wasn't the only one, where you sit, Nina, why? What's the why of it? And at one point, he told the appropriators that there's no... None of this has anything to do with religious freedom, you know, in terms of the violence. Really, it just doesn't pass the straight face test. So I, you know, that's, in my humble opinion, one of the reasons why we had such... Again, and I remind everybody, it was Clinton who signed the International Religious Freedom Act. So... And we didn't know if he was going to do it. At the very end, we did have veto-proof majorities to overcome a veto. But that said, he did sign it, and I'm forever grateful for that. Ms. Jacobs.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Onubogu, thank you for testifying again before the committee today. As you know, President Trump, in his November 1st Truth Social post on Nigeria, threatened to deploy the U.S. military guns blazing into Nigeria to completely wipe out the Islamic terrorists there, stating that if we attack fast, if we attack, it will be fast, vicious, and sweet. All of those are quotes. Do you believe unilateral U.S. military strikes in Nigeria would make the situation more or less safe for Nigerian citizens?
I believe it will make it less safe.
Can you elaborate on why?
Because all the data points show us that Nigerians value diverse societies. But even as they value diverse societies, there are also experiences where overwhelmingly there are low levels of trust, already just from the threats that have been made. We are already seeing, especially if you go on social media, people basically forming camps and basically coming up with different conspiracy theories about what is feeding the threats that have been made by the president. So I think it's important to understand the complexities of Nigeria and understand how fragile things are in the environment. And that for years, you've actually had members of the political class that have actually manipulated that public mistrust to gain power. So at this point, you hear people forming different camps and making different statements and building different conspiracy theories. I think overwhelmingly Nigerians value unity, and the conversations that are happening now are not good for Nigeria's social cohesion.
Thank you. And I do want to dig a little bit more into that, because it's not just the actual military strikes that would cause problems, but we've actually already seen that even just these threats and rhetoric have had immediate consequences. I've personally heard anecdotes of this happening already in Nigeria. You mentioned it in your opening statement that this was a risk. Could you expand on this and explain how inflammatory rhetoric can make tensions within communities even worse and actually lead to the very violence and targeting that this administration says it's trying to counter?
So as I mentioned, because of the low levels of trust that we see in communities, all we have to do is date back to several conflicts that have occurred over time in different parts of Nigeria. And we've seen how some of them have been driven by conspiracy theories or hearsays. And in many ways, rhetoric like this could actually be detrimental, because it moves us farther away from finding a real solution to the problem. All we have to do is just look at over the last few weeks since the threats were made and to just listen to all the different conversations and discussions happening. None of them have actually come out with real solutions from the side of the Nigerian government or from civil society or the international community. Everyone is all focused on what has been said. So it moves us farther from finding solutions. And especially in environments like those in the middle belt, where we've seen protracted conflicts, time and time again, as you engage in these communities, you realize that while people live together, there are very low levels of trust. And it's extremely important that we keep that in mind, because very little things can inflame tensions that already exist in the country.
Thank you. You've talked a lot about this deficit of trust, lack of trust, about the sort of crisis of governance in Nigeria. How should Nigeria fix this problem? And how should the United States work with Nigeria to address it? What would you advocate as the type of diplomatic actions and U.S. investments that would make sense here?
I think most importantly, for this situation, Nigeria needs to take the lead and literally summon the utmost political will in this regard. As I mentioned in my testimony, a lot of these narratives have continued, because people... Nigerians are not getting the justice that they deserve. And unfortunately, it's breeding an environment where there's a sense of impunity, where those who carry out attacks, regardless of what religion they come from, they feel they can continue those attacks. And then the communities, there's a sense of grievance, where at the end of the day, if they feel that the government isn't coming to their aid, they come up with their own narratives. So at the end of the day, there needs to be an acknowledgement on the part of the Nigerian government. Nigeria needs to take the lead. Nigerian leaders need to summon the political will and work with their allies and work with their allies and partners, such as the United States, to be able to address this violence. You know, at the end of the day, we may put out numbers there and talk about the numbers of victims, but it's important for us to put a face to these numbers. The violence has gone on for so long in Nigeria. So Nigeria needs to take the lead, work in partnership with allies such as the U.S. And there is a moment here, there is an opportunity here, for folks to come to the table to really find a sustainable solution to this problem.
Thank you. I yield back.
Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. And Ms. Shea, appreciate you highlighting the issue of the disarmament of Falani militants. I think that certainly would be one of these solutions. Obviously, there's not a singular one. It's a multifaceted problem that's going on here in different regions of the country, and there's a lot of complexities to it. But as we've heard, I think, a couple times here, and I do agree with, there is an opportunity here for the Nigerian government to strengthen, deepen, and broaden their relationship with the United States if they will do that in coordination and... In coordination and cooperation with the United States government. When I met with the delegation, as Mr. Smith met with them as well, that was one of the messages that I gave to them, is that there is an opportunity here, but you're going to have to take that opportunity. And I am very hopeful that they will do that, because myself and Chairman Smith and President Trump, we've had enough of this. This cannot continue to go on in the manner that it has, and it now has the president's attention. And I do agree that, you know, you get all this kind of information flying around out here that many times is not helpful. I recently saw the Foreign Minister was in some interview, I think it was Piers Morgan, and it was the same thing when they came here and some of us spoke to them, just disputing these numbers, right? I think the Foreign Minister said, in the last five years, there's only 177 Christians have been killed. I don't think there's anybody who believes that, right? And I don't think that it's necessarily constructive on their part to try to downplay what's happening here. But Ms. Shea, I'd ask you, how do you think about the differences, though, between some of these statistics that have been reported, obviously of non-governmental organizations that it seems to me have robust, on-the-ground informational networks and those offered by the Nigerian government? How do we have such a huge disparity in the numbers in between what we're saying or what some of these groups on the ground are saying, and then the Foreign Minister saying there's 177 Christians killed in the entire country of Nigeria over the last five years? That which is just hard to believe. It seems that number was achieved likely in just the last couple months. But please.
Yes, you're right. It's a huge disparity. And assuming it's not just propaganda, one of the reasons why there is a range of numbers for any particular event is that precisely because the government doesn't do any police work. So there's no one that comes in to prevent it or to, during its occurrence, to stop it or in the immediate aftermath. So the witnesses have fled for their lives. There's chaos. There's destruction everywhere. The evidence has been tampered with or been deteriorated by the time people come along. It's very hard for the local pastors and priests, who are the ones there taking the body counts, helping the survivors. It's very difficult for them to do that job and at the same time do documentation. They do it as best as they can, but the numbers are far larger than that Foreign Minister is saying. I also want to say that I think that President Trump's designation of CPC has been extremely important. He has gotten the attention of the government of Nigeria. We've heard that there's a high-level delegation in Washington today discussing this with the United States.
I met with him yesterday.
Yeah. So I think that this has been a very beneficial exercise thus far. We'll see how it plays out.
Yeah, I think you're right on that. And we've heard several people mention early warning systems, and I do agree with that. I think that those can be helpful. But I do want to highlight a case that just happened recently in the Plateau State. We had a pastor there who had warned the Nigerian government and said, we are under imminent threat. We are going to face an attack if you all don't send some forces here in the next 24 hours. We need help. Please come here and help us. The Nigerian government not only ignored it, they literally put out a press release about it, calling it fake news and hyperbole and being overblown. Well, 13 people lost their lives the next day. 13 people murdered, Christians murdered. I don't know how much an early warning system is going to work if people aren't listening to warnings that are literally over the phone. I'm not sure. So I'd say to the Nigerian government, you're going to have to, and we keep using the term, prioritize this, because it's certainly a priority for President Trump and I think many of us on this panel here today on this dais. But I just wanted to highlight that, because those are... That is the type of behavior that has to change. Because, and to your point of people not trusting the government, how can you trust a government that doesn't even show up when you ask them to? How are you supposed to trust your life with something like that? You can't. Obviously, you can't. And I think that's why it's incumbent upon the Nigerian government to work with us in coordination and cooperation to address these issues. Obviously, there's going to be some type of bifurcated approach to this. The Falani Islamic militant issue in the middle belt of the country is distinctly different from what you faced with Boko Haram and ISIS in the northeast of the country. And that's probably more of a question of kinetic military options rather than some of the other things that maybe State Department could do more in the middle belt, backed up by some of those same type of, at least, military deterrence options in that part of the country. But I think it does need to be a kind of whole-of-government approach to this, but we have to have the Nigerian government as a willing partner in all of this, because the president is, as Chairman Smith just said, extremely serious about this. I'm extremely serious about this. I stay up at night. It's hard to sleep sometimes thinking about this, and I pray about it every single night, just thinking about, you know, my own brothers and sisters in Christ in that country just getting murdered for the profession of their faith, our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. So it is absolutely heartbreaking. But I do want to thank the chairman again for convening this hearing, as he has over the many years and been working to advocate for the people of Nigeria. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yield back.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moore, and thank you for your leadership. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for your leadership to Mr. Onubogu. What do you see as the primary drivers of religious freedom violations in Nigeria? And secondly, what are the political, economic, social, and historical factors that exacerbate the situation?
Thank you, Congressman. I really think it's a mix of factors here that we're looking at, a mix of factors here. And as I mentioned in my testimony, at a core of this are failures of governance. There needs to be an opportunity to address the governance deficits that we see across the board in Nigeria at every level. And I think sometimes when we look at this issue, it's also important, because we haven't been able to take a look at it from a whole of government, from a holistic point of view, it's important for us to understand what are the areas that really encompass more institutional weaknesses, and then what are the areas that are plainly just a lack of political will. And so I think, again, as I had mentioned earlier in my earlier response, there is an opportunity here to actually begin to identify what are the areas, what are the institutional weaknesses that exist within the Nigerian system that allow or enable the environment for the violation of religious freedoms? And then what are the instances where it's just plain old lack of political will? Once we're able to do that, then you'll be able to identify a proper solution to a problem. Right now, we haven't been able to identify a proper solution. And this is why these conflicts are protracted, and they've continued time and time again.
Well, thank you so much. It's also very peculiar. I'd like for it to be noted in the record as we look forward to the great works of the continent and Africa. It marches and rises towards 2050, where 25% of the world's population will be of African descent. And this country, the United States, seems to talk down to African people historically. I would say that the United States is a very generous nation, and in some ways, the most generous nation, but has the most peculiar cruelty towards the African continent, and it must be confronted about its legacy. The second thing is, we are right now in a hostile environment with Republic of South Africa and Nigeria, the nation's two most populous countries, if you will, or certainly two most prosperous countries that should be dealt with. I have another question for you. Based on your experience, which types of U.S. government programs or initiatives have been past or present have been most effective in promoting religious freedom and interfaith dialogue in Nigeria?
Thank you very much for that question. And for several years, I actually worked specifically in the middle belt on these types of community security initiatives. And we've seen local-level peace-building initiatives where communities have been able to, and most importantly, as a community-led, led by the communities, they've been able to put in place early warning systems. And beyond those early warning systems, moving a step further to ensure early response. Because, as has already been pointed out, it's of no use if people are able to raise an alarm and no response comes through. So over the years, we've seen some successful low-level peace-building programs across the middle belt, community-led peace-building programs. We've also seen programs that have included religious leaders from both faiths, particularly in places like Kaduna, in Adamawa, in Benway, in Plateau State. We've seen interfaith mediation councils where Muslims and Christian leaders have been able to come together to work closely with their communities. Those types of initiatives we've seen have been very successful.
Last question I would have for you. In its effort to dismantle the USAID program, the Trump administration terminated a USAID program called Partner that supported peace-building efforts to northern and north-central Nigeria. The $2 million project helped to strengthen the country's early warning and security response systems and provide training for local leaders, including religious leaders, on conflict mitigation strategies. This project, amongst others, like it helped to provide local leaders with mechanisms to alert law enforcement to possible conflicts before it happens. Partner also helped facilitate communications between farmer and herder, community leaders, often individuals from different religious backgrounds, in an attempt to bridge the gap between the two groups. Ms. Onubogu, what are some of these early warning signs of conflict? How would you describe the drivers of conflict in northern and central Nigeria? And to what extent do you assess these stem from religious and climate and resource competition?
As I said, the mix of these drivers, it's a mix, and they're complex. And that's why I say, as you look at violence or as you look at a specific conflict, it's important to understand that there might be some conflicts, or there are conflicts that are specifically driven by religion. And there are some other conflicts that may have specific drivers. Where the challenge is now, or where the problem is, is when everything is lumped in together. You know, working for several years in the middle belt, when a conflict breaks out and people say, oh, it's a farmer-herder conflict. It's a farmer-herder conflict. Now, every type of conflict in the middle belt becomes a farmer-herder conflict. But we need to take the time and take the step to actually identify which of these conflicts are driven specifically because of disputes between farmers and herders? And then which of these conflicts are just plain old criminality, as some of them are? And then which of those conflicts are actually driven because they are... People might be targeted because of their faith. And I think this is where we miss the point, when we do not acknowledge the complexities within Nigeria, when we use a single story to define the conflict. This is why we've not been able to find viable solutions. If we go back and, I believe, Ms. Sheen, in the previous panel, we spoke about the Chibok girls. This was an incident that happened in 2014. And just a week ago, we saw another group of schoolchildren kidnapped from their schools. Since 2014 till today, we've seen six different incidents of kidnapping. And we've had discussions in each and every one of them, but we've not been able to identify a viable solution, because we tend to oversimplify and we tend to generalize what the problems are. But for every conflict that happens in Nigeria, there are specific drivers, and we have to be able to take the time to identify what the root cause is of each specific conflict for us to be able to develop a sustainable solution.
And thank you so much for your testimony. I yield back, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jackson. Mr. Stusman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you both for being here. Consecutive administrations here in the United States have viewed Nigeria as an important partner in West Africa. But I would say that our relationship has been less than perfect. Just last year, the Nigerian government wrongly detained Tigran Gambarian, a U.S. citizen and former IRS agent, for nine months on trumped-up charges of money laundering and tax evasion. Combining this with the Nigerians... The Nigerian government's woefully inadequate response to this violence, I'm concerned that they may not have our best interest at heart. And I'd like to, both of you, to answer this. And Ms. Shea, maybe you can go first, but would you elaborate on the relationship? And Ms. Sheen, maybe you can go first, but would you elaborate on the relationship between Nigeria and the United States? And do you think continued inaction on religious freedom issues will harm our relationship going forward? Does Nigeria want to have a civilized relationship with countries in the West and in Europe and other parts of the world?
Oh, thank you for your question. I think that Nigeria wants and needs the United States. And I think that many Nigerians have come to this country and continue to come to this country for education, for investment reasons, or to live. And they are among our most successful, if not the most successful immigrant group. So I think that they have a lot to gain, and they know that from a relationship with the United States. I think I'm encouraged that the Nigerian government has an extremely high-level delegation over here talking to the Trump administration about how to improve relations.
So that the Nigerian people, for sure, is what it sounds like you're saying, want a relationship with the United States. What about the Nigerian government? I mean, to the extent that, you know, they're giving us lip service on Christians being killed, I mean, do they have the ability to put a stop to the killings?
I think they have an ability to take action, which they have not done in the middle belt, where the Christians are the primary target. They're the special target of these militias. And the government has not lifted a finger to help them until now, and maybe not even now. But I think that the government was not given any message before. I mean, we really, this is the first year that the first couple of weeks that the government of the United States has said that there is a problem, that we are not happy, you know, our law, the International Religious Freedom Act, requires us to point them out and put them on the list of the world's worst persecutors of religious freedom, violators of religious freedom. So they have not gotten that message before. Before, they were told that their root cause is that these are two socioeconomic groups. There was no mention of religion. There was, we were told, and the chairman, Smith, was told by Secretary Blinken and others that this had nothing to do with religion. So now we have a new analysis, and I think that we've had a very helpful response to that.
Ma'am, are we frenemies? Are we? What are we?
We're friends. And I'm sorry, I actually missed your original question. If you could repeat.
Yeah, I'm just asking, you know, could you elaborate on the relationship between Nigeria and the United States? And do you think that continued inaction on religious freedom issues will harm our relationship going forward? Does Nigeria, are they hearing the messages that are coming from our president, from the United States, about the concern of genocide? And not just, I mean, I realize there's people that are being killed that are both, you know, Christian and non-Christian, but that this sort of violence is just cannot be tolerated.
Well, if they weren't hearing it before, they're definitely hearing it now. And I think, as I've mentioned before, there is an opportunity, and an opportunity that should not be missed in the way we convey as the U.S. how we want to work with Nigeria on this issue. The framing of the engagement really matters, and I think this is where we have to be, the U.S. has to be strategic in its partnership. The partnership with Nigeria, as you rightfully mentioned, is one of our most important partnerships on the continent. As was mentioned, by 2050, the population of Nigeria will surpass the population of the United States. So this is definitely a relationship that we have to keep and build, but approach our dialogues from a place of honesty. And I think what we have going now in this relationship is that the Nigerian people, there is a wide acknowledgement by the Nigerian people that something needs to be done and done quickly about the levels of insecurity in the country.
Do you think the Nigerian government is capable of putting a stop to the violence?
And then this is where I say that with the Nigerian government actually looking at where the inefficiencies lie or where the weaknesses are within its institutional capacity. And I think this is where, again, being able to differentiate what are institutional weaknesses and then what is just plain lack of political will.
Yeah.
And I think there needs to be an admittance of where the areas of weakness lie, and there are some clear areas of weaknesses.
I agree. And I think they should, if they can't handle it, they should be willing to ask the international community for help. I mean, you know, we should all be standing for life, no matter where at in the world. Thank you. I'll yield back.
Thank you. As we close, I just want to make a point. The U.S. Commission on International Religious Freedom in their report says that Nigeria's government has continued to forcibly close camps hosting displaced Christians who fled violence by Boko Haram despite persistent security concerns in their communities of origin. That is a deep concern, and we're appealing to the country, to the government, I should say, of Nigeria, to rectify that. I also would point out that, you know, there's a, without objection, I would ask the House of Representatives' consent that an op-ed that's in National Review by Maureen Ferguson and Asif Mahmoud be included. The title is Nigerian Girls Are Being Kidnapped: Islamic Tourists Have Inflected a Decade of Religiously Motivated Violence on Christian Women and Girls. I would note parenthetically that according to Amnesty International, April 2024, that over 1,700 children have been abducted since 2014, since the Chibok girls incident, 17 cases of mass abduction. But it's interesting that this piece that was written, this op-ed, and without objection, it'll be part of the record, Maureen Ferguson was appointed to the commission by Mike Johnson, the speaker. Asif Mahmoud was appointed by Hakeem Jeffries. So there you have both sides of the aisle, both sides of the political ideological spectrum writing an op-ed about these girls and about this terrible sexual violence. So without objection, it is part of the record. And anything else that you'd like to say before we close? Thank you so much for your leadership, your comments today. I want to thank my colleagues, both sides of the aisle, for their very, very incisive questions. And we have much to do. The hearing is adjourned.